Good evening and welcome to the January Board of Trustees Meeting of the Penfield Public Library. This evening, we have a quorum, although we have a few members who are not here. One who's stuck in her driveway, one who has an ill spouse, and two others who had a conflict involving children's activities. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And before we review the minutes, I would like to call your attention to the documents that Deanna passed out. We have our Conflict of Interest Information Form, our waiver of receiving hard copies of the board materials, which means we can continue to get them by email, and our signature on the ethics statement. So if you can sign those and give those to Deanna, then she will know that we've signed them, and she's a notary, and she will put them in the appropriate place. Does anyone, would anyone like to comment on the minutes or make a motion to approve?
I have, I have one little, one little peep on the minutes. I don't think the space-time continuum works if we started the meeting at 7:03 PM and adjourned at 6:05 PM.
No, you're absolutely right.
It says adjourned at 7:37. It says 7:30, adjourned at 7:37.
I think you're looking at the, you're looking at the board minutes from the January 3rd meeting.
Oh, was it? Yes.
And that was the one that was, we started at 6:00 and we ended at 6:05.
Oh, okay, I can see it. Oh, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, that's okay. Keeps us on our toes.
There we go.
And for those of you who haven't met Sally, this is Sally Snow, who's our interim library director, who's with us this evening. Were there any other comments on the minutes?
We would need to approve both of the minutes.
Okay, can we do it together?
Yeah. Can we? Okay. I'll make a motion.
To approve? Okay, thank you Denise, and thank you Jen. All in favor? Okay, thank you. This meeting is broadcast and available on YouTube, so that is, it is available to the public. Sally, would you like to say anything as far as your time here, or just to?
Well, I'm just, I'm here serving as an interim between Bernadette Frankman leaving. She, her last day was the 31st of December, and, and when we get the new director in. And it's been a lot of fun so far, everybody's been very welcoming, just helping out where I can, you know, being a contact for the staff and the board, so. And if anybody wants to know my previous experience, I was the former Assistant Director for the Monroe County Library System. I was also the Director of the Parma Public Library, and I served as the Young Adult Librarian and Circulation Supervisor for the Brighton Memorial Library. So I have about 24 years of experience under my belt, so.
Well, we're glad to have you with us for this time.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Linda, would you like to give the town liaison report?
Okay, sure, so, this is the beginning of our new year with a new town supervisor and a new town board member. So that's, you know, it's, it's exciting times. And we're, we're doing our priorities and goals right now for the, for the year with the different departments. And so we have last week, and we have some more this week, and so on. So, you know, we're getting all together, you know, Marie's doing a good job. My supervisor Cindy's doing a good job getting everything, you know, coordinated for her term. And, you know, so that's what's really happening right now with the town. We, we did renew a couple of members. Melissa and Brent were renewed as board members for the Library Board of Trustees on our confirmed, at our organizational meeting. I don't know, anybody have any questions about what's happening?
Not right now.
Okay.
No? Are you going to do the finance report for Navaj?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I have, I was auditor, but.
Okay. I didn't see a finance report, but we are doing, we are doing well. It looks like this is the first of the year, so everything is, is blank.
He did send a finance report on January 12th.
I must have missed that, then. It looks like everything is, we have 151,000 in the gifted memorial fund. And we have, I don't, did, did he say whether he had gotten the certificates of deposit?
I think he did.
He says that the CD was moved to the money builder's account.
Okay.
And another one was renewed in a new CD with, which will mature in July. And the rest is, the 152,000 is in total between Family First and.
Candidate for National.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the finance information? Judy?
I move to approve it.
Thank you. And Melissa Seggins, thank you. All in favor? Rachel is not here this evening. Judy, would you like to give us an update from the Personnel Committee?
I do have an update on the Library Search Committee. The Search Committee has worked long and diligently following the process that was set by civil service and by the town of Penfield. So, we've had to work within time limits that have been set under civil service jurisdiction and their guidelines. But we've interviewed very strong candidates, any of whom would be a fine director. It is a challenging process, and we have, we have many factors to consider. And we're looking for the candidate that's going to be, that's going to serve, do, serve best as in the library and for the town. So, we are in the final stages of our process, and we are hopeful that we'll be able to make an official announcement soon. So, that's where we are at this point.
Thank you. Melissa, would you like to give us an update on strategic planning?
So, back before the holidays, I met with Natalie and Sarah, two librarians. And part of our task was to look at some of the goals from our strategic plan. Specifically, one of the goals was to create a welcoming atmosphere for patrons and staff. So, we decided to take a walk through the entire library and start taking notes of every touch point a patron might come in contact with and just sort of jot down our thoughts on how we could improve the area or the experience. We put together a document. We went through, we started at the outside entrance, the exterior of the building. We walked through the foyer, the entrance, the Bremen Room. We went into the children's room. We went to the new book area, which is right off the entrance when you come in, you know, the entire library, and just tried to look at all the different places that we could improve things. We came up with a pretty big list. Some things are more aesthetic or cosmetic, I guess. We saw some, a lot of walls that need some painting, you know, carpeting, things like that. But then, the librarians also showed me certain areas that they were hoping to improve spatially, you know, moving bookshelves around, or areas that they needed more space for certain materials. And it was interesting to hear their side of things, you know, the way they interact with, in the library. So, we have a whole list put together, it's a giant wish list, I would say. I think the next step is to wait and work with Plan A. We're having the feasibility study done, so we think that it might be a good idea to show them kind of what we noticed. And also wait for the new director to kind of go further with this, so. So I have the list, I'd be happy to share it with all of you guys if you want to take a look. Some of it might need a little explanation, because these are just our, our little notes, but it is a Google document.
Do you want to go through it a little?
Sure. So, when you come in the main doors, the staff door we've talked about on the exterior of the building is something we think might need a, you know, to be painted. The hour sign on the, on the glass, at one point, we had the hours, I think they're on there, you know, in vinyl lettering. But then there was also some eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheets of paper stuck up with different hours, and just making sure that that's consistent with what the actual hours are, making it easy for patrons when they pull up to see if it's open or not. Walking into the foyer, we looked at kind of just your first impression when you walk in, and how can we make it as warm and welcoming as possible. We have the new library sign up on the wall now, which looks nice. But we talked about maybe having our logo on a carpet, you know, when you first come in. And also signage to really differentiate that the rec center is to the right and the library is to the left. When you first come in, there's the really large touchscreen bulletin board, I guess you could say. And it allows patrons to search for books right there, but I don't think, we kind of discussed this, we don't think many patrons actually search right there because it's so large and it's not very private. So what could we use that screen for, you know, besides that, you know, to promote programming or things going on at the library? To the right there where the new book area is, we talked about rearranging things a little bit, because there's currently kind of some, I guess, four-foot, five-foot bookshelves that kind of just block the pathway when you walk through. So we thought about maybe we could open that up a little bit. And also add new signage on the walls above the ceiling. I never knew that was the new book area. It says new fiction and kind of in small signs, but I said maybe we should have something on the wall that really does, designates that as that area. The furniture, we noticed, is a little dated or worn, so we might want to look at getting some new furniture, so that if we are going to have a little seating area there, just something a little bit newer. We went into, let's see, the children's room, and Sarah and Natalie talked about different ways to rearrange the books. And I guess they also want to re-catalog some things, or just to make it easier for patrons to find books. I think there's, I can't really speak too much to this, but there's certain ways where the books are organized right now, and it's not as easy as it could be to find things. So they talked about rearranging things and then making it easier to, to find the fiction books or the series, I guess. We've, we talked about adding a bathroom in the children's room, which is something we've talked about as a board. Maybe even adding doors that close to the children's room. So if there's an event or an activity going on and you want it to be quieter, maybe the doors close and it actually kind of creates a separate little area for families. Let's see, the adult section, same thing, just the chairs and the tables were pretty worn. There's kind of really big power cords on the table and floors that we thought maybe there was a way to get something a little sleeker. We thought it might be nice to include local artwork somewhere in the library. We have a lot of local artists, and it might be nice to have their artwork on the walls. Let's see. The study rooms, we thought maybe new signage, again, you know, really call out where they are in the, in the library. The computers, there were a lot of small signs around, you know, I don't know, five-by-seven, eight-and-a-half-by-eleven signs. And we thought maybe it would be better to just have one big sign somewhere that says, you know, the computer and technology area. What else? There's also a technology help desk, which I actually didn't even know existed, but it's a pretty big desk, and it wasn't staffed at the time. And we thought if, if it's going to take up that much space, we should probably have someone either staffing it all the time, or maybe we don't need a space that big, maybe we can use it for something else. The teen area, there were a lot of things we came up with for that. And we met with the teen librarian, and again, she had a lot of ideas about how to reorganize the space. Let's see, it's a lot of, we talked a lot about the friends. They have, there's a little spot in the entrance when you come in about the friends. And then there's also a section kind of halfway through the library that's designated for their books. And then there's the friends drop-off site in the very back of the building. And we just thought maybe there was a way to organize the friends' materials a little bit better and make sure people and patrons know where, where to find the books or where to drop off their used books. The other thing we noticed, the back door where you do drop off the books doesn't open as an exit. So we thought that was something that is a fire hazard, we should probably fix as well. So we just, I mean, we, we went through and really just wrote down every little thing we, we saw, and they, they jotted down all the things that, you know, in a perfect world, what would we do? And we have our, our list here, but.
Are either of these librarians that you worked with, had, had they gone out to do field trips at the other libraries, like Henrietta or Chi-Li or some of the other ones, do you know? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure. I want to say, I feel like Sarah might have, but I honestly can't remember. I know, I know they've been doing that, I just can't remember if they were two that did.
I didn't know if they had, you know, been able to take advantage of that.
Yeah. I'm not sure. We had talked about also, like, the freestanding search kiosks. I don't know if you've seen them at other libraries.
Fairport has them.
Yeah, Fairport has them, but we said, you know, those might be nice to have around the library instead of actual computers. They take up a little less space, and you can put them strategically throughout the library, but.
I think these are all really wonderful points. And when we do start working with the architects for the feasibility study, I think it would be helpful to, to bring these in. And some of the concerns, like having a different arrangement of shelves or something, I think that's probably best left to the architects to make a recommendation. But it's great to know that the librarians want to do things to make it easier to find books. And I thought those, it was interesting that they had a lot of the same concerns that we did in thinking about this. So that was really helpful.
Does the architect, do the architects have a plan? Or they're just, they, I know they've toured, but.
They've toured and they.
Have they put anything down on paper?
They, no, we stopped them because we were going through the new director process, and we did not want to have a new director come in without having input into the beginning of the process, because that's, it doesn't. Yeah. And so we, we did stop them. What they have are the plans for the building from the town. So they have, they have those plans, and they can see what, what the structure is like, what the structure can hold, can they, can they build up? Can they not build up? Can they put in some posts and build up something? I'm, you know, I don't know.
Right.
I, but I think that they were going to look at several different options, but when we asked them to stop, they just put this aside.
Right.
So.
Well, that makes sense.
We are looking forward to working with them again. They were just, they were lovely people, and I know that they've been out a couple of times over the summer and early fall. So, it'll be, it'll be good for a lot of reasons when we have our new director. The next thing up is our bylaws and policy. And Megan sent me something today, but it was too late to have our 24, we have to have things up 24 hours in advance. And this was too late to do that. So what we do have is a policy that I drafted, and it's a draft. And it is on the meeting room reservations. Because apparently, people have been coming in and talking to the circulation staff, the reference librarians, or they've gotten to Deanna, and they have said, oh, we really want to, to use this space. Some of them are not from Penfield. And the library, right now, because of COVID, the only space that we can really make available to people is the Bremen Room. And the library shares use of the Bremen Room with the rec department. So if the rec department has it, or if there's a library program in there, it is not available for the general public. And I don't know what, how long we wait, but you can't just like book it six months in advance on the, because that would conflict with perhaps a library program or a rec program. So, I drafted this policy, and I hope you've had a chance to read it. We won't, we can discuss it tonight, but as we usually do, we will discuss it one month and then vote on it the next. Does anyone have any questions?
I just had a question about the wording, and I don't, can't locate mine at this moment. Oh, thanks. There's a question, just D where it says, "Birthday parties and events for which admission or any fee is charged are not permitted." So, does that mean we're not going to allow birthday parties?
Right.
To use? Okay. So, I didn't know if that meant just birthday parties that are.
Charging.
Charging.
No.
Or have, you know, have the juggler coming in or something like that?
No, I didn't even realize that people would come to a public facility and do this, but.
No, they do. Other towns, you can rent, other towns, you can rent community rooms to do birthday parties.
Really?
Instead of the lodges, because lodges book out, yeah, a lot of the towns do that.
At the rec centers, though.
Yeah, the recs. Well, we share, right? So it's not at the library, but it's at the rec, like ours are, it's probably confusing because we're in the same building as the library, whereas other towns might have separate.
See, somebody could rent the Dolomite Lodge, or the Lodge at Harris Whalen, and have a party there. But that's different than the Bremen Room.
You can rent the rooms in the rec center as well.
But there's a fee.
Sometimes.
Well, I think, I think any of the towns do a fee.
Can you? Yeah.
For a birthday party.
We don't.
Depending on what you're.
You'd have to pay for it, the conference room.
No, we didn't have to pay for the conference room when we rented it.
I used to use the conference room for girls on the run, and I didn't have to pay for it. Not the Bremen Room, but the.
No, no, the Bremen, there's no charge for the Bremen Room, which is one of the reasons that people want to reserve it, because there's no charge. And they know that by going through us, there's no charge, and if you go through the rec department.
There's no charge.
There's no charge.
Sometimes there is, isn't there?
Not that I know of.
Maybe not.
No.
But for.
Okay, we need to clarify that, I guess.
Okay. I think that's a question. I think, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry that that caused confusion, and... Well, that makes me stop and think about this.
Yeah.
Do you think that birthday parties should be permitted in the Bremen Room?
It's carpeted, right?
Yeah. No, I know.
Because other community facilities, I know, are not carpeted.
Is the Bremen Room considered part of the library exclusively?
No, it's shared with the rec center.
Maybe that's the confusion for people. Because if you could, I could book it a different town, maybe they just, maybe that's the confusion.
I don't think the Bremen Room is listed in, as a community room in the community center, in like the rec books.
I don't think it is either.
I don't think it is. No, I've never seen that.
I think it's primarily the library, it's named after a librarian, Ruth Bremen, you know? But the rec department has used it when they needed it, and it became this relationship with the library. So the library uses it when they need it, but if they don't need it, and the rec department needs it, then they'll let the rec department have a program.
Or maybe people coming to the programs think, oh, this would be a good room to rent.
Yeah.
Yes. So, I don't know. I am, I am open to having birthday parties there, but I'm thinking of little kids and cake.
You'd have to charge a deposit, I feel like, or you'd have to charge a fee, like any other booking. And then if, like you said, most of the systems does a year in advance, well, what if the library or the rec center wants to host something?
Yeah.
With four months' notice, we're bringing an author in, oh, there's a birthday party here.
Yeah, I know, that would be.
Because that'll be what happens, because those lodges, I booked them for my kids, and I booked them out like eight months in advance, and I barely got choices.
Yeah, the lodges.
I think people are just struggling to find space.
Barbara, can I share?
Yes.
I only allowed two months prior for reserving the room due to the fact that the library programmers have first choice. So all the librarians have first choice for the children's programs, the book discussions, any programs that the librarians have, they have first choice. Second choice is the rec department. They will contact me if, or the director, if they are interested in reserving the room and what date, to see if it's available. After they're done, and it's within the two months, then it's opened up to the public. We have allowed small refreshments, but nothing on the aspects of a birthday party where there's actual pizza, food, cake, just small refreshments we have used. People that do reserve the room is responsible to set it up as their likings and to leave the room as they found it, meaning they put everything back. So all the chairs and the tables will go back to where they found it prior to them entering the room. We do not have a custodian that goes in and cleans up after every program. That's their responsibility.
You know, what have people used the room for?
I have had homeowners associations. We've had, just recently, an elderly group. So just a group of family members, they have come together because they have elderly parents. And they share, you know, just, they just share ideas and help and guidance on Alzheimer's or dementia. And they will share like counselors, this is who we used, type of thing. Recently, Starbucks was under construction. So I had a technology group who would meet monthly at Starbucks, came in and met with, in the Bremen Room until Starbucks opened up. They were really great to work with. And they brought all their technology, and that's the other thing. We don't provide laptops or anything for them, so they would need to bring everything.
So it's not particularly, it's not like parties, it's meetings.
It's meetings.
Meetings.
It's meetings.
It sounds like mostly meetings.
Non-for-profit organizations who need a place to meet. Boy Scouts uses it regularly. Boy Scouts, we've had Girl Scouts in there, using it for their meetings or their crossovers on a regular basis.
And you haven't had to, like, any issues with the food? And you haven't had any issues with like booking and conflicts or anything?
Nope, and whenever birthday parties are mentioned, we are, birthday parties are not acceptable because of the content of the food.
That's a good idea.
If they bring pizza, drinks, cake, and something gets spilled all over the floor, there's nobody there to clean it up. So, clean it up properly. But the libraries do use it for their programs, and I think that's what brought it out into the community a little bit more.
I think it's a great use of space for meetings and stuff like that. And I think there are other places in the community center that can be used for birthday parties.
And I always tell them, if the room is, is reserved, to reach out to the community, to the rec center, because they could have a room available. And we don't at that point. So I have had a couple people actually have reserved the recreation room.
Yeah. That's good.
So we have a backup, you know, we help rec and they help us in the process.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Barbara?
Yes.
Have we looked at the policies at any of the other libraries? I don't know the, the background, I don't know how far you've gone with.
No, I, I did this so we would have some sort of discussion. And I think that's an excellent point, to look and see what other libraries have. In Chi-Li, the whole building has, is like a meeting space.
Turn around a quarter, it is like that.
And around a quarter.
But other, other libraries, you know, because I work at Brockport, we had a policy in Brockport that specifically covered things like birthday parties. So I can find some more policies to bring to the board.
That would be great, Sally.
Or study. Because I always say, why reinvent the wheel? Because you may find their wording at one of the libraries works for you. And the directors are always happy to share, so.
Oh, that would be great.
I'll see what they got, let me make a note.
The one change that I did want to call attention to, and this goes to something Deanna was saying, where we don't have anybody who goes in and cleans up the room afterwards, is that there is a refundable deposit. So if you wanted to use the room for a meeting, it would be $25 or $50. You'd write a check, and as long as you put everything back, you get your check back. We wouldn't even deposit it and write you a new one, we'd just give you your check back. But if you don't. But if you don't, and somebody has to go in there and take all those chairs and put them back in the closets and fold up the tables again, then we probably.
Is the 25 and 50 for?
It's just suggested, no, suggested amounts. I, you know, I don't know what people think is a good amount.
Yeah, we should probably just look at other libraries and see.
Yeah.
And question for Deanna, are these mostly Penfield residents?
No.
How do we, are there ever?
I would say maybe 10% are Penfield residents.
And should we take that out of the policy then? Because it's one of the requirements.
Well, that's another, that's another question to discuss and I, I think that.
What do you do if a Penfield resident comes and then there's?
And then you've got somebody from around.
You've got a Fairport.
Yeah, Fairport person.
How do you deal with that?
Yeah.
Has that happened?
Penfield residents get priority?
Yeah. Is that what you do?
No, because it's, if they call up, if they call up a week in advance and somebody's already reserved the room two months prior, unfortunately, I can't call them and tell them, no.
Yeah.
I don't know if we should necessarily make that a requirement. I feel like we want the rooms to get used, so why limit it more? I don't know.
I think we should limit it, but I think it's tough if we have a resource for Penfield residents that they can never utilize.
Or maybe just have the, you know, the first of the month that's open for, you know, residents, but then.
After the first.
After, you know.
Oh, I see what you mean, like maybe priority booking.
Yeah, priority booking.
Oh, priority booking.
Like give them.
Or maybe you can't book sooner than a month ahead if you are not.
Yeah.
I think they do that for the town, right? For the pavilions.
You know, the town advertises the lodges. Nobody's advertising the Bremen Room, you know? It's in the lodges at the beginning of the year, you know? You, you, you rent the lodge, right, you know, as fast as you can. And Penfield residents pay less than.
Right.
Than a Fairport resident. And that's really the criteria there. If you have another town want to take one of our lodges, you're going to pay for it.
That's right.
So, you know, if you're going to actually put some kind of fee for the Bremen Room and advertise it, you could do the same kind of thing, you know? Certain time, you can rent it and if you, you know.
Are we allowed to, I mean, could we use this as a small revenue source for the library?
Hmm. Well, not if the town doesn't. Not if the town doesn't charge for the community center rooms. I don't think we could.
No, that's why, you know, that's why the non-refundable deposit, because somebody has, if somebody has to go in there and do that, I mean, that's, that's different. I don't know who that would be.
I would suggest talking to the rec department too, because I don't know what their policy is. Do they have Penfield people in before a non-Penfield person wants the senior lounge or the community room? You know, how do they justify it? Or are they just letting everybody in? You know? I think you need to follow the same procedures, because it's the one building, you know?
True. Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Well, we have work on this one to do, so it's a good thing we haven't planned on voting this and just moving forward. And Sally, did the director's report? Did anyone have any questions or comments on that?
I just want to say how great it is to see all of the variety again in the in-person programs in the children's center after all of the, the stuff that had to be canceled because of COVID. So, it's just, they've got some great ideas, some things that I remember from going with my own kids who are now, you know, teens, but some of those tried and true activities and some new ones that look terrific. So, I was really pleased to see all of that happening again.
It'll be, unfortunately, there's, there's going to be a little bit of a hiatus because of the rise in all the COVID cases. So, the programmers took a two week, they put everything on a two-week hold and they're going to see what happens. Some of the children's programs may end up going to Zoom again, but they want to put everything on a two-week hold to see what happens, because it just had gotten bad and people weren't coming in and weren't signing up. So, hopefully, once things clear again, that they'll, that they'll go ahead, you know? I think everybody's really eager to get back to in-person programs and the baby story hours and the lap sits and all that, which you can't really do over Zoom, so.
But the number of participants is, has really been very positive. Even in the young adult section, it seems like there's more vitality in what's going on there.
Well, they have a new librarian, right?
Yeah, Stephanie's a really good addition. I worked with her.
But that's a tough age group to try to, you know, bring in, but they've got some interesting things going on for them, so not the same old same old. Which works, but.
Yeah.
Nice to see new things.
And then, one of the things I wanted Sally to talk with us about tonight, as you know, we're responsible for the library hours. And with COVID and illness, there, there's always a chance that we might not have enough staff to open. And, and I don't know what those levels are, but I asked Sally to think about that and to kind of talk us through what might happen. What would, what would the COVID level have to be before we went to drop, to people drive up and get their curbside delivery of their materials? What would we have to do if we, what would the level have to be if we had to reduce the number of hours that the library is open?
I, I sat down with Sarah, the head of the circulation department, because circulation is really the critical contact point for altering hours or going to curbside. And the reduction in hours or going to curbside would be the last thing we want to do. So, we have choices of offering part-timers more hours to cover if people are out, reducing the processing of new materials, because that's part about, that's about 50% of some of the staff who work on the circulation desk also process the new materials. So, that's like 50% of their time. Having other staff help with returns and routers, that means pulling the librarian staff into that, which would cut into their time doing programming and their librarian services. And reducing open hours is the last choice. To get to that point where, that we get the nuclear option of reducing hours or going to curbside, we have to have over 70 hours of staff time out for COVID absences. So, that would be probably two full-time people and one part-timer, or three full-timers. At that point, we don't have enough hours to sustain the level of work. I have a whole calculation here. We made it through with two full-timers on circulation out at the same time. Just, it was tough and we had some of the part-timers do a few extra hours and things slowed down, but they made it through. But after talking to Sarah, who was one of the people that was out for a while, she said that, she said that, yeah, any more than that and we, we just can't manage. So, again, it's the, the nuclear option, reducing hours, you know, or going to curbside. But we think we might be through the worst of it now and none of this will come to pass. But at least we now know what we, what we can do. And I have a calculation here I can, I can share with you, just based on how many people work, what they do, where their hours go, what they're doing, and if we have X amount of people gone, how many hours we have left for public service. So, we end up having a, we would end up having a gap of about 20 hours for the public service and that would be difficult to fill at that point.
When you say 20, a gap of 20 hours, does that mean that would be 20 hours per week, in a week, that we would have to reduce hours?
Yes.
So, that would mean essentially four hours a day for five days?
Mm-hmm.
Just, okay.
How have the part-timers, have they agreed to take on more hours? Has that been an area that can be a go-to if you need it?
Some of them can, some of them can't.
Right.
So, that depend, you know, that all depends. It's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to make a hard and fast on this.
Correct.
Because the part-timers have other jobs or kids or, you know, something that they can't do. So, some of them would be able to do more hours and some of them won't. So, you know.
Sure.
It's a, it's a moving target and like I said, we would have to figure out which part-timers, you know, what hours they could fill in to establish what hours we would be open.
Yeah. I was just curious.
Yeah, I wish it was, I wish it was simpler, but it's just, it's just not. Nothing's been easy with this.
No, it hasn't. And like you, I think we're probably near the end. But I would hate to have, think that that's the case and then all of a sudden.
Right.
We have five or six people out.
Yeah.
And what do we do? And I think we need to know what our options are.
Yeah.
So, if you had that many, say you had four people who called in and said, I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to come to work, I'm ill, would your first inclination be to reduce hours or go to curbside?
First, well, first inclination, if we, if we go curbside, we've, we've gotten rid of all the other services. So, there's no reference, there's no computers, there's no nothing. So, I think reducing hours is probably the preferred way to do this, because then we have reference service, we have computers available for people who need them, because curbside all we're doing is handing out books.
Exactly.
So, I would rather.
Can we have both going? I think I was there the other day and I saw, I don't know, one of the librarians taking books out to people who, you know, didn't want to come in. So, we are doing both.
Yeah, there's still some people who don't want to come in and the curbside has been popular too, especially if you have problems getting out of your car. I know they've been doing it at Gates, you know, I sub there, they, you know, people who have issues, they can't get out of their car, or you pull up and you got a car full of kids, you know, and you need to get your books out. It's a really nice option that the libraries have been doing and I hope, you know, after this, they'll continue, because it's a very popular service.
Yeah, I use it all the time.
He's meeting all the needs.
Well, yeah, I don't want to get too, I have a two-year-old and a four-year-old. To get them out of the car to walk in to pick up a book, they'll be roaming forever. So, it's great.
Yes.
It is great. I hope you guys do consider keeping it if you can.
And it's just, it's just a nice, the downtown library, some of the branches started doing even before COVID as an experimental service for people, because we know, we noticed that people needed it. They had kids, they, you know, had, you know, difficulties, walking, whatever, and it was very popular. So, you know, I think it's something that they can probably continue. It's not like there's lines of cars, you know, it's not that hard.
Right. Right. So, what would the minimum number of hours have to be, do you think? Would you be closing like an extra hour early every day? I mean, how do we let the public know that we're going to a shortened?
Well, we would have to, we'd have to sit, sit down with the board and, and figure out what our, first, what our gap is of hours, you know? I'm, I'm assuming, you know, 70 hours, but if we are down like three people, you know, that's 120 hours, that's even worse. So, that shortens our days. So, we sit down and decide what our most popular times are, you know, and we'll have to come to that decision together. And, and then just do a major media campaign. We have to change our phone, change our signs, change our website, you know? Probably, I would do a press release.
Was it the, the Rochester Library just did that because of staffing shortages?
Yeah, I think Sally just closed, yeah. That used to be my job at RPL, so yeah, that would have been me. So, yeah, major, major coverage of all our media outlets to let everybody know that's going on.
But at this point, we really have no alternative at this point. So, we need some kind of a policy or a decision that if this doesn't happen now, it may, there might be a reason to do it in a, in the future. So, if, do we do that? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I don't know. I hadn't anticipated this going on much longer.
It seems like you have a plan. It seems like she has a plan, though. She would consult the part-time people, so it doesn't seem like we're in a situation where this is.
Yeah, and it's, it's not a, not a policy. It's a, it's a procedure.
Well, that's why I was trying to think about it.
I would be hesitant to write a policy, though.
And so that, that makes sense, because the procedure, then, at this point, we've never had a procedure, have we?
No, but I think what you've outlined, Sally, is a procedure.
Yeah. It's, it's operational and again, it's, you know, it's a, like I said, it's a moving, it's one of those moving targets and he said, we can have an idea of what we, what we need to do, but it's one of those, we'll know it when we see it.
Right.
Kind of, kind of deal. So, I, I have an idea of how many hours we need if the staff comes to me and says, hey, guess what, five people just called in today. Then I know we're in trouble, I have to sit down, calculate the hours and talk to you guys and go, okay, when, you know?
So, if that happens. Sally will reach out and then I'll reach out and then we can all just kind of chime in and.
Yeah.
Approve a procedural plan.
Right. Makes sense. But at least we'll have.
But at least there's thinking that's behind it. And you know when it needs to kick in.
Right.
Which I think is the most important thing.
And I hope they've all had it by now. It's not going to happen again.
It sounds like she's as prepared as you can be at this point. Like that's pretty, to me, that's a pretty good, like, that's a pretty good plan. You've covered everything. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that as.
Yeah.
And then call us if you, if it gets really bad and you need us.
We could come in and sub, no.
Well, we could, but we wouldn't know what we were doing.
Well, we can turn you guys to check, check, check all the books back in delivery, that's.
I think we could probably handle that.
That always needs to be covered. And, you know, and that's part of the plan too, because we took into account all the stuff that they do besides the public service, you know? And we have a bunch of part-timers, with a bunch of part-timers are running around, you know, trying to, you know, do the book drop and our delivery. And we have a router where we have to go around and pull all the books out and then get them ready to send out to the other libraries for hold. So, you know, that's like 75% of their hours in addition to, you know, being on the desk. So, there's all this other stuff that's going on behind the scenes that nobody, nobody sees.
Nobody sees. Or even if you're in the library and it's going on around you, you're just not aware of what it is.
It's like the beautiful swan. That's all you see is the beautiful swan. You don't see the paddling going on underneath.
Exactly. The other thing I wanted to say, we have our bylaws, which we need to approve and I passed those out. And I'd like to wait until everyone is here next month, but if you can look at them, if you had any changes. There's one change that, to the term limits and the term length that I'd like to put in there. And if you see any others, if you could, just put them in, that would be great. Also, the personnel policies, I don't think we want to do anything with those right now, but just be aware that some of them date from the last century and.
I saw that.
And so, I think we will have to be prepared for when we do have a new director, that that's going to be something that's on our list of things to tackle. So, if you ever have time when you're bored and you're looking for something exciting to do, go look at our personnel policies and, and see if there are any that you think could be updated or how you might want to update them. I had hoped that we would be welcoming our new director, but I, because I have to do the agenda far in advance, so I, I thought we might be there, but we're not. So, we are ready for our claims authorization.
Okay. I would like to move that we approve the vouchers in the amount of $6,255.69.
Denise seconds, thank you. All in favor? Okay. And the auditor for next month is Meg. And the auditor for next month is Megan. So I will write to Megan and tell her that she is the auditor. And hopefully, she will be able to join us. Is there any other business or anything anyone wants to say before we adjourn? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Thanks, Jen. Melissa Seggins, thank you. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.